Order. A pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence. Thank you. We're going roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
What?
Calwinski. Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here. So we have. One, two, three, four. Five, one, two, three. Six present in chambers, two electronic, and one trying to get through electronically. Mr. Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you. Feel like we're back in COVID. Yeah. Nice to see you all. Thanks for inviting me again. I wanted to start off and officially request an executive session with the council. I want to talk about some things going on, litigation, negotiations, things that we can't talk about in public. I know I talked about it in the last meeting, so I'm asking the council president and I'm asking my attorneys to get Mr. Berger together and set up an executive session so we can get together and talk about things behind closed doors that are legal to talk about behind closed doors. So officially making that recommendation. We have a number of balls in there, as you all know. Obviously, negotiations with Teamsters hasn't begun yet, but it's about to. Fire negotiations are underway. Police negotiations are underway. We got a lot of economic development projects underway. We have financial issues that need to be talked about, litigation that we need to talk about, and it's been a while. So I talked about it last meeting. Nothing's been done, not because of it's anybody's fault. I'm just officially talking about it on the record. So please get the lawyers together and see what we can do to get behind closed doors. I need to update the council. Thank you. Chief of Staff position is still open in the mayor's office. I posted it. I have a number of internal applications and I have some external applications to go through as well. So I wanted to remind everybody that I'm doing this solo right now. So if I appear stressed out, you understand why. I feel like the manager of the Chicago Cubs right now, because not only do I have Chief of Staff spot open, I got department head sick or down. So Hammond Sanitary District CEO suffered an injury at work and is recuperating, but out of business for the most part. He's in and out at work. He's fine, but it's going to be for the next month or so hit and miss. So I have a number of people acting in the number two position at the Hammond Sanitary District right now. They're all technical. I'm talking to CEOs, the one that's injured right now. All the technical people are still in place. I want to assure the council people that we're still doing a good job. But Mylan is resting, so get well, Mylan. My city engineer's been down for the past couple of weeks, so we've been really operating at a reduced capacity. Dean was sick for a while, and then he got married last week, and he's going to be back this week as well. So we're patching it together in City Hall right now. My office is full of staff, I'm happy to say, but we are patching it together right now. Want to remind all the council members that on the 3rd of July, we do our annual fireworks display at the Hammond Pavilion. The Porter Orchestra plays as usual, and I know that the immigration, the naturalization ceremony takes place earlier that day. So if anybody's interested. I wanted to also inform the council, I'm sure you heard from your employees, that we have IT server issues affecting City Hall computer systems. Everything is real slow in City Hall right now. This is a capacity issue. You know, our capacity, our storage capacity gets bigger exponentially every year, and we were hoping to make it through the year with our server and our storage, because it's expensive to get an upgrade, and unfortunately, we didn't make it through the year. So we're in the process now of shopping around. Megan's been made aware. IT is working with Megan right now, but everything's operating a little slower than normal. So we are aware of this and working on it, but it's a storage issue. I just wanted to let everybody know. Activity log for the past few weeks, or past couple of weeks since our last time. We had a real big meeting with Representative Mike Andrade, who coordinated a meeting with Representative Earl Harris, Representative Hal Slager from Trittown, Senator Dan Renell from Munster Highland, and Chairman Jeff Thompson, who's from down in Indianapolis. He's the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. So it was a big deal that Representative Andrade lined up a huge tour of basically North Township, a lot of it right here in Hammond. Chairman Thompson was up here. It was imperative that they see everything good going on, and we did a good job. I wanted to thank Mike Andrade for coordinating that. All these representatives and senators went all over Hammond, all over North Township, Representative Andrade's district primarily, but in Hammond, they visited the South Shore Train Station and the new Gateway Station getting built, because he helped us a lot with that. They visited Purdue Northwest. They visited Byway Brewery, the Sportsplex. Chairman Thompson and everybody that was part of that group really had a lot to do with getting our food and beverage proposal through the General Assembly last year. So I want to thank Mike Andrade for putting that together. It was a real, I think it was a real coup, actually having the Republican chairman of the Ways and Means Committee touring our city, you know, seeing everything that we're doing here. I think it's a positive for us. Hello, weekly, we have weekly special events team meetings now until the Festival of Lake starts. We're less than one month away. I want to thank the council for all the help they do putting this event together. So thank you. We did the grand opening for Meet by Linds. Very nice. We celebrated last week with that. For those of you that weren't able to go, it's a $55 million investment, 120,000 square foot building, 300 new jobs in the city Hammond, eventually going to grow to 400. This is a huge positive for our city. Congratulations, Councilman Salinas and Second District. This is a 10-year project. Three different pieces of property were involved. I went through a number of economic development, planning and development, chief of staffs, like this project was there for a long time. So to finally score a touchdown on that was a big deal. So thank you, Councilmen Salinas, for hosting us last week, and that's a great deal for us. So we had Juneteenth ceremony at MLK Park on June 19th. Obviously, it was very nice. Thank you very much for everybody that worked so hard on that. City Hammond at the Emerald Green Restaurant hosted the Friendly Sons of Aaron Board of Directors' Annual Dinner over there at the Emerald Green Restaurant. Board of Directors from all over Lake and Porter Counties, they just love it here, and Emerald Green did a great job. It's nice to have them. Bunch of Irish guys coming to town. Hammond FOP Local 556 and my administrative team met for another round of negotiations last week. Think it was productive. We're starting to get closer to the real issues. They're looking for big pay raises. Big pay raises. That's why we need to talk. Okay? Okay, so good. I made that clear. City Hammond hosted the Big Dem Breakfast at the Hammond Sportsplex. Over 200 people from all over Northwest Indiana attended. A lot of people from Indianapolis were there, seeing our top tourist attraction in the city. I don't know if it's top, but it's pretty close now. We had both Attorney General Governor, Attorney General Governor, Attorney General Candidates were there. The governor, Democratic nominee for governor Jennifer McCormick was there. Lots of people from all over Northwest Indiana catered by Byway Brewery. Good time. Thank you, everybody that showed up. Action items for the council tonight, food and beverage tax. I know we had a public hearing on that about an hour ago in accordance with state statutes, so thank you for doing that. It was, under state statutes, has to be separate and distinct from our council meeting. I know we're talking about the Swanell Economic Revitalization. First off, so the food and beverage, you guys all know where I stand on that issue. It's two economic development projects that will primarily benefit from it. We could use the money on three projects. The three projects are downtown Hammond Train Station, which we plan to fund with food and beverage proceeds, the Hammond Sportsplex, which we plan to fund with proceeds from the food and beverage tax if it's approved, and we could, if there's money left over, do a proposal with the Hammond, with the Pavilion at Wolf Lake. I'm not sure there's going to be money left over to get that done, to be honest with you, but we could use the money for that project as well. We cannot use that money for any other thing in our budget, nothing. Those three projects, that's it. So if it's passed, this tax won't kick in for at least another 120 days. We have to send our proposal to the Department of Revenue, and they have to get everybody ready to start collecting additional 1%. So even though it passes tonight, and if I sign it tomorrow, we still have four months before this could start. So I urge you to please push that forward. Swanell Economic Revitalization Area, this is a real good project for the Third District here. I know Councilman Barry is on Zoom right now. It's, I could see it from my office. This is a project that's also been going for a long time. It's a great project for the Third District. It's a great company right here in Hammond, and I urge you guys to pass that as well. This is a project that could help us down the road with developing right around City Hall as well, because this is going to give us increment. We have another project that's coming to the Third District. It's going to be down there right off of Kenwood. These two projects, Swanell and the U-Haul Project, could help us build up increment that could help develop this area right around here. So these projects all work together. One without the other is going to cripple us trying to develop further down the line, so I hope you'll think about that when you're passing Swanell. I hope you do pass it. So I have nothing else unless you have questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Anybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I moved that we approved the minutes from the June, would that have been June 10? June 10th meeting, and place them on file, please.
Second.
A motion to second by Councilman. Councilman Emerson, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning June 7th, 2024, and ending with claims dated June 18th, 2024, claim number 4968 through claim number 5506, inclusive in the amount
Second.
A motion to second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Passes 806 in chambers, two on electronic. Electronic. And one absent. Okay, next up. Public hearing.
Item A, Resolution 24R-10, sponsored by Councilman Tyler, a declaratory resolution determining that a certain area of the city of Hammond be designated as the Swanell Economic Revitalization Area, to which deductions from assessed evaluation, from assessed valuation may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Okay, this is our public hearing on 24R-10, which is just described by our clerk. Declaratory resolution determine the area designated as Swanell Economic Revitalization Area. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt Riordan, MCR Partners, 5920 Holman Avenue in Hammond, Indiana. I have today here with me Ed and Lil Roviero from Swanell Beverage. And as I had mentioned at the previous meeting before the council considered this, this is a company that has been doing business in the city of Hammond since 1947. As an economic development professional and planning and finance, when I see companies that are investing where they're at and maintaining jobs at the existing location, it's always a great thing. You know, the mayor had mentioned Linds Meats, and that's a big deal, and you know, this is equally a big deal for the Rovieros and their investment in Hammond. Just a brief background on this particular timeline. You know, they had been pursuing this project for quite some time, as the mayor had mentioned also, and then, you know, along comes COVID, and they're in the beverage business, and when restaurants are closed, you're not selling beverages to anybody. And undeterred, Ed and Lil stuck with the program, got together with some local engineering and contractors, put together a plan, came back around, and we sat down and talked with the Hammond Economic Development Department. Ann and her team did a great job. Juan, thanks so much for your efforts to help make sure that the council had the correct amount and type of communications. This is a company that has 42 employees that pays a payroll of $3.8 million a year. They're going to add five new jobs, and the average wages would be estimated between $60,000 and $120,000. The building itself will be, as the mayor said, you'll see it all right, right across from City Hall. The company pursued the vacant Carpenter's Hall on their own. They pursued the demolition of that project on their own. I know that Councilman Tyler was very pleased to see all that occurring, and now we're to the next part of this project. Respectfully, we request that the council consider this creation of an economic revitalization area. As you well know, that is the first step to creating and allowing for a deduction and assessed valuation. I'm here to answer any questions the council might have regarding the project. The owners are here. If you'd like to talk to them about the project, I know they have a story to tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this?
Ed Roviero, the current owner of Swanell Beverage in Hammond here. And I just want to say we are elated to start this project. I want to thank the mayor for supporting us probably for about five years now. And before COVID, he was up here before nobody knew what was happening, and everybody was in, and our beverage industry was decimated. But it came back, and we're actually stronger than ever. This project is, like the mayor said, is going to help this area. We're right across, and I'm sure everybody knows where the old Carpenter's Hall was, right across the street from Hammond High School on the Highland Street end over there. But we'll assure you, we will not let you down. We'd love to work with Hammond on hiring people, whatever it would be, from production workers, the salesman, to national sales manager, as long as they meet the qualification, of course. But I want to thank you all for kind of listening to me at the caucus here, and thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Stoyer, Robertsdale. I'm not against projects or anything like that. I just wish we knew a little bit more about the deductions from assessed valuation, how that would work. I mean, all we get is, you know, somebody tells us what's going to happen here. No one explains anything around here. So I mean, you guys just do what you're going to do. That's fine. You know, everybody's aware of that. But as I said the last time, the business has 42 employees, and that's great. I was hoping, again, I mentioned that, I'm probably sounding like Bob Markovich, but the point is, you know, are they from Hammond? In the caucus, the owner mentioned, he used the word, he's hoping to find qualified workers to work at the place. So I don't know what that means. Is it highly technical work? Is it, you know, more of a labor thing? Is it something you can learn on the job? Nothing's explained. And I'm just curious as to how much assessed valuation is being granted here, deductions. So maybe Matt would like to explain some of that. I don't know. Only you guys know.
Hi, Mayor Tom. Just in regards to what used to be there, the Carpenter's Hall paid zero property taxes. I mean, anything that we're doing at this site is a move forward with, as far as our assessed value. And for this tax abatement, I mean, even getting 10% of nothing is, I mean, getting 10% of something is better than getting nothing at all. So the fact is, this investment is going to help grow this area. And the way TIF works, the more investment we have in this area, you know, it's going to build up assessed value next to us, and we have increment built up here. And so if we do want to build things around City Hall, we could use this investment that they're making at Swanell.
Welcome to Verizon Wireless. Your call can now be completed.
Okay. So anyway, I really urge you guys, you know, and I do, and I appreciate George's enthusiasm for Hammond residency and all that, but this is a private business. You know, I think we do a pretty good job for the most part, but we can't expect private businesses to.
Hey, it's Mark. I can't get the audio. I mean, I can see.
We can hear you, Councilman. Okay, anyway, please pass this. It's a great project for the Third District. So thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Let me see if Alexander can, because I need to answer.
Can we mute that?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Are we allowed to speak after public expression?
Why would you want to speak at a public expression?
Pardon? I'm sorry, during a public hearing?
A public hearing, yeah. Is it important to?
Well, I can answer his question. It's real simple. It's a tax abatement, right? 10-year tax abatement. A matter if it's two, five, 10-year tax abatement, we're going to collect exactly half of the amount of taxes we would over a 10-year period. So it's, the formula is 2% on businesses, it gets a 10-year abatement, it's graduated over the years, and it comes out to exactly half, half the taxes that we would have collected in the first place. And to get that kind of development here, I'll do that all day long.
Does anybody else from the public like to speak on this? Anybody else from the public like to speak? Okay, public hearing is closed. All right, next up, communications. Any communications? Next up, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
The Capital Improvement Board did not meet on May 20th, 2024.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be August 14th, 1:00 p.m. East Hammond-Polman Crime Watch will be Tuesday, July 18th, 6:00 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch is off for the summer because school is closed. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet July 2nd, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch will not meet in July. Irving Community Watch is off for the summer because school is closed. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch only meets twice a year. So look for an announcement somewhere around September, October. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, July 11th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. The last couple of meetings, I announced that, thanks to the generosity of the mayor and the, a couple of other organizations, namely Hammond Community Watch, we were offering 100 Ring Doorbells for residents in the city. The application process started today, and we have 200 applications. So we've closed the application process. Unfortunately, those who didn't come today will have to wait until next year. You will get a letter in the mail if you did complete an application advising you whether or not you qualified for the Ring Doorbell. But we never in our wildest dreams dreamt that this program would be as popular as it turned out to be. So congratulations to those who will be receiving the Ring Doorbell, and I apologize for those who are not qualifying, and unfortunately, you'll have to wait until next year. But we do our best to try to be the eyes and ears of our police department in our community to keep us all safe, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I guess this falls under Capital Improvements, but a few years back, now that we're talking about COVID, I had a project scheduled to go on 169th Street to get resurfaced from southeastern to Indianapolis Boulevard. And because of COVID, the funding dried up, and because of Capital Improvements Board and the Community Crossings Grant, that project is starting to be resurfaced as we speak. So thank you to the Capital Improvements Board. And again, we've had to get creative in ways to find funding, and this is a classic example of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? We are bringing out 24-13. Somebody make that motion?
Mr. President, Council of the Hall is bringing out 24-13.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, committee reports is closed. Next up ordinance, third reading, final passage.
Ordinance 24-13, sponsored by Councilman Salinas, Councilman Emerson, and Councilman Vines. An ordinance of the city of Hammond adopting a 1% food and beverage tax.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for passage of 24-13, final passage and adoption of 24-13.
Second.
A motion to second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
As the mayor said, this ordinance is specific to three projects. The Sportsplex expansion, which also includes development there, the train station in downtown Hammond, and if there's any money left over, the Pavilion. There's a 10-year or is it 20-year time limit on it? I think it sunsets after 20 years, and it's 1% on a dollar at fast food, or just food and beverage, places that serve food and beverages. I think I got that right. Mayor?
I agree.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's important to point out that this does not apply to groceries at all. So if you go to Strack and Ventil and you buy a bunch of groceries for $100, it costs $100 after this is over, okay? If you go to Strack and Ventil's Deli and you buy a sandwich, it'll be an extra 1% on the sandwich, and maybe even the drink you buy along with it, because it's prepared. If it's not prepared, it doesn't apply to the tax. You go to fast food, it applies. You go to restaurants, it applies. And like I said, if it's passed by the council and signed by the mayor, we have to send it next. We have to send the food and beverage bill to the Department of Revenue, so it won't even start collecting until 120 days later, when they alert all the restaurants in the area about the new tax. So just because we're doing this today doesn't mean anything's going to change right away. So.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Okay, before we start the roll call, we'll only do a roll call for those present, because by state statute, we cannot vote on it if we're not in person. We're going.
Alexander.
No, she's not.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycoz.
Yes. 24, 13 passes six, zero, and three not present.
Councilman Raycoz, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you. Clerk Golick. Next up, resolutions.
Ordinances. Introduction.
Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 24-14 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance creating new funds, fund number 3393 and fund number 3395 to facilitate the 2024 Firehouse Project Bond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2414.
Second.
Been a motion and a second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, uh, back a while ago, we passed, uh, a bond for the new firehouse. And when we receive these, the, uh, funding, uh, we need to dedicate the funds to receipt and disperse the allocation of the funds. So this is, you know, all in the controller's office. We have to have specific line items.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycoz.
Yes. Passes eight, zero, one. Unable to communicate with. One absent.
President Raycoz, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Now, next up, resolutions.
Item A. Resolution 24R-11, the petitioners, the Department of Planning and Development, and the sponsors, Councilman Tyler. A resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming Resolution 24R-10 that designated and established a certain area of the City of Hammond, Indiana as an economic revitalization area to which deductions of assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common counsel of the City of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
I move for passage of Resolution 24R-11.
Second.
Been a motion and a second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, as it was stated earlier, this is just a confirmatory resolution supporting, uh, the resolution we passed at last meeting, 24R-10, which establishes the economic revitalization area for Swanell to be able to submit a request for, um, tax abatement agreement as well as move forward with their expansion project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycoz.
Yes. Passes eight, zero, one. Not voting.
Item B. Resolution 24R-12. Petitioners, the Department of Planning and Development, mayor's office, and the sponsor is Councilman Tyler. A resolution of the Hammond City Council granting Hammond Swannell Incorporated an assessed valuation deduction, a tax abatement for qualified tangible real property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for passage of Resolution 24R-12.
Second.
Been a motion and a second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, this is the committee request from Swanell regarding their assessed valuation deduction or tax abatement uh, for qualified tangible real property. Um, this is a, as, as Councilman Warple explained earlier, it's a 10-year traditional abatement. And as of right now, the estimated tax savings would be a little over $313,000. Um, just some more information about Swanell, they've been in our community for 75 years. Uh, this new building will be estimated value of $7.5 million, I believe. Um, and they are, they are restricted under, uh, previous ordinance, just like all Hammond businesses that enter into, uh, tax abatements with us are, that they have to have at least 51% of any new employees hired have to be Hammond resident. So, um, I look forward to working with the owners of Swanell and trying to submit to them any great candidates for any of these new positions that they are looking to fill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I won't restate what I said before, but, um, you know, I think a bunch of us, what, a week ago? Just went over here to, uh, with 55 million dollar development by, meets by lens. I know Councilman Salinas and I and a couple others have toured the Calumet National Bank Building and I think that's $25 million investment. And now we got a $7 million investment. And what I really like about it is second generation that has decided to stay in Hammond. And I'm 100% in support of this project and the abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycoz.
Yes. Passes eight, zero. One absent.
President Raycoz, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. New and unfinished business. Any new and unfinished business? Any new and unfinished business? There are none. Next up, public expression. First up, George Stoya.
George Stoya Robertsdale. Uh, first of all, uh, my concern with respect to some of the comments made about certain projects is I don't particularly care and I don't think anybody does in a democratic oriented government, especially as a citizen, uh, just being told what's going down and take it or leave it. Uh, I want to be, I come here to be critically informed, to have my perspective critically informed. I think the people sitting out here come for the very same thing. And all we get here is just, we're told this is what's going down, brother, take it or leave it. I don't like it. I don't care if you don't like it, I don't like it. So that's that. With that, given that I, as you well know, have opposed the lawsuit, uh, with the Voting Rights Act that the city and the mayor have gotten us into, I think it's a profligate spending of money. I've opposed it since it came down the first time after he waited a year before introducing, uh, beginning you guys to enact a resolution, to fund the thing. And now he's funding it all. Now the lawyer I suspect is representing not just the city and the mayor, which by the way, do not have standing to assert this case. These funds that you're, that you're approving are illegal. And I have the case law and I have a memo and a letter that I'm going to give to you guys just to prove it. You can have your lawyer look at it. Fine. Go knock yourself out. The law is black and white. It's express, clear. So you guys got to do your job. You've got to look into this. So with that, I'd like to hand in or submit, uh, my letter. Have it entered into the record. One of these is. Anyway, there's four copies there. Oh no, here it is. Can I trade you one? I need to. I suspect, uh, Liz can make you copies. If you want a copy from me, I'll be happy to email you one. I've done it before, but I really wish you'd read it. It's a short memo. And, uh, it speaks for itself, but you guys have to take a look at it. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on this and we don't have a dog in this fight. You have to take a look at this. Neither the mayor, according to federal law or state law, have standing to invoke any sort of jurisdiction in the state or federal courts. Neither does the mayor, neither does the city. You have to understand that. It's black letter law.
Thank you, George. Next up, Valerie Penanen, Peniman.
Good evening, Council. I'm Valerie Penanen from the Association for the Wolf Lake Initiative, better known as Ollie, the abbreviation. As you know, we are a registered 501 charity and land trust and our history goes back about 20 years. So I'm here tonight for three reasons. First of all, I want to thank you very, very much and very sincerely for your financial support of Ollie in recent years. By funding our advisory committee meeting, which happens every fall, you helped to bring together people from both sides of the state line to discuss the latest ecological news from Wolf Lake. Secondly, I'd like to invite the City of Hammond, hopefully including one of you. I, I did send you all a letter about this, so hopefully you've seen that. Um, I'd like to invite you to please partner with us and not just with us, but with other, uh, people, government officials on the state and local level as we develop a long-term management plan for the watershed. This is something we've been talking about for years and our constituents are urging us to, to get going with it. So we cordially invite you to take part in our management plan task force, which meets every other month over Zoom. With your help, we can protect the best interests of our region's people and wildlife for many years to come. And finally, since Hammond, as you know, is one of six government entities involved with Wolf, with Wolf Lake, the others being the City of Chicago, Cook County, Lake County, the State of Indiana, and the State of Illinois. I truly want to emphasize that we value the input of all six and that includes Hammond. And we promise to keep in regular contact with all six, including Hammond, as the plan takes shape. So, um, I'll just end by thanking you once again for your support of our mission to work across state boundaries to improve and enhance the Wolf Lake watershed.
Thank you. Next up, TJ Gertik.
Good afternoon, council members. I wanted to wish you all a happy summer solstice. Uh, we just had our summer solstice festival, um, and cleanup, uh, this past weekend and everyone had a great time. They'll tell you more about it. But I, I actually wanted to talk about, um, so, you know, the festival was at Briar East Woods, which is the forest that is threatened by development of a bridge, Governor's Parkway. And that is alleged to solve the problem of kids walking to school, as you know. The administration has told you that, um, this is the most, the, the, the best, it's the cheapest option that we have available to us and that's, that's actually not true. Because we saw in the public hearing, um, presentation last April that the Governor's Parkway Bridge costs 12 million while the, um, an underpass or overpass at Grand Avenue would cost only nine million. And this is not free money, uh, that is from the TRACS program. The City of Hammond must still pay 20% per the TRACS program. And so if you opt for the more expensive option, which you've been presented with multiple options by NDOT, then you are opting to spend an additional approximately $1 million for no reason. It's a less effective, uh, solution to the problem. It makes flooding worse. It makes noise pollution worse. It destroys an urban green space. The only thing it does is it clears the land for future residential development. And so if you want to save your town money, I'm sure you could spend a million dollars on plenty of things. I'm sure you can think of some. Save your city money. Give your city the green space that it uses frequently and deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, TJ. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, Council. Uh, yeah, we had a great time, uh, this weekend on Saturday. We had the Briar East Wood Summer Solstice celebration and 40 to 50 people showed up. And we were really concerned when we started to, well, not when we started it, but we were concerned about letting it proceed because it was so hot out that day. Uh, it reached a total of 95 degrees out and we were like, oh, should we cancel this? Are people going to have a hard time uh, managing the, uh, the heat and everything like that? But the fact is, once everybody got out in the woods, there wasn't one single complaint. It was nice and breezy and it was just a very pleasant day. Our biggest concern ended up not being a concern at all. Why? Because it is a forest and it is entirely shaded. Okay? Which brings me to a, another issue. You know, we've brought up about how this is going to increase the risk of flooding. The mayor has talked about it, the increase of, uh, dramatic rain events that's coming and are already flooding our area. This is going to increase the risk of flooding. Your Governor's Parkway. It doesn't solve the problem that you said it was going to solve from the very beginning. It does not solve the problem. It is the most expensive project or option that was laid out. Why would you take the most expensive option? It was trying to be diverted that, well, we're not going to develop it. We all know you're going to develop it. We know you're going to develop it. And anybody who says no is being disingenuous. It also increases noise and pollution. But another thing it increases is, has anybody ever heard of the Urban Heat Dome? This is when, uh, it gets really hot out and the sun beats down on concrete, asphalt or buildings and places like ours build up a bunch of heat. That heat, uh, persists and it can raise the average temperature seven more degrees. So on a 95-degree day that we had the other day, that would bring us up to 102 degrees. That heat does not dissipate during the evenings when there's green space. No, it's locked in concrete and asphalt and it dissipates slowly. So your evenings stay hotter and your days get even hotter. So there's no relief. Now you might think, oh, this is a frivolous thing. No, this is real and it's going to get. No, this is real and it's going to get worse and worse and worse as time goes on. This is a real thing that you really, that you must pay attention to. Because you are going to add a half a mile road, 40 feet wide with concrete and asphalt. Bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jana.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, um, Ken and TJ made great points. Um, this Saturday at the event, it was really, really beautiful to see so many people come together. Uh, we all had one thing in common, which is that we all care. We all care about nature, we all care about the well-being of ourselves and the people around us. I met some residents that live right behind the woods and one lady said she can actually see the train tracks, um, outside her kitchen window and she said she has not seen them stop, um, in quite a while. So, you know, it really makes Governor's Parkway unnecessary because the trains do not stop. So, we do not have, um, an issue of stopped trains anymore, right? So, um, yeah, it was really, really a, a, a nice day and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. That's our last, uh, public expression. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Spitali. Second mo, all in favor?